Call to the order and roll call.
Honorable Michael Rumel.
Here.
Mayor for De La Vert.
Here.
Alderman Swarthout.
Here.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Elliott.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Here.
Alderman Luby.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
May we please do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Under my comments this evening, the first thing is that they have chosen a younger, handsomer, and certainly someone who has much more hair than I do as mayor this evening. And I like Mr. La Vert, who is the mayor for the evening tonight. He will be running the meeting as long as his mother allows him to run the meeting. So I will be giving the report, but he will be in charge. I wanted to say a couple of things. Remember, on Friday, I had the honor of being at a reception that recognized Debbie Haddad, who was a former council member, for her service as volunteer to the community. Twelve people got the award. Member of them are people who were in the community that you would recognize. Winfred Dunksen, Virginia Fester-Fedrick, Debbie Gallagher, Debbie Haddad, Mary Jane Hender, Eleanor Knight, Janet Nelson, who was former 115 chairman, Louise Reese, Jackie Smith, who has done so much for Gorton, Debbie Steppen, Ethel Tinscher, and Pat Waldock, who's been virtually everyone's nurse at school at some point or another. So I wanted to congratulate all of those women for an award that they deserve. At the same time, I said former Alderman Haddad, because I'd like to announce this evening that Alderman Haddad has resigned from the council. She has taken a position that is a conflict of interest with the city, so she is not allowed to serve on the council any longer. And effective last Friday, she has resigned from the council. By the time of our next meeting, which is the changeover meeting of the council, I will be nominating a new fourth ward alderman, who will need to be voted on by this council. That alderman will serve one year. He will serve to the next general election, which is next February or March. Is it March?
April.
Whatever. And at that time, we will be electing two aldermen from the fourth ward. Mr. Luby is also termed out, I believe.
No, I can go one more.
One more, okay. So it'll be Mr. Luby and one other person who will be elected. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same person as who is nominated, but we will have a new fourth ward representative come next time we meet. So I wanted to announce that. The third announcement is that Lake Forest Swim Club is having their 50th anniversary this year. This one is one I've been involved with. I sat on the board of Lake Forest Swim Club for a number of years. I announced probably every swim meet for about five years for Illinois swimming, and it's near and dear to my heart. They've been a wonderful addition to our community. They either practice at the Lake Forest College or the Lake Bluff Pool, and many of the youth in our area have been part of the club. Certainly, a couple of youth in our area have been very well representative of our club. One member was a NC2A champion a number of years ago. Another member was just high point winner, beating Michael Phelps for high point winner about two weeks ago, and currently ranked second in the world in the 100 Free, and hopefully will be a member of our Olympic team. So people that come out of this club, a lot of things are learned out of this club, and certainly, one of the things is a skill and a desire for swimming, but certainly being good people in the community is another one that I think everybody has come out of this club working with. Because if you work as hard as you do to be on this club, you certainly have to have a work ethic in life. So they've done a great job of mentoring kids for 50 years, and whereas the Lake Forest Swim Club is a year-round USA Swimming program that strives to provide a safe educational environment for the Lake Forest residents to develop technical skills, physical fitness, and competitive success in sport of swimming, and whereas the Lake Forest Swim Club is celebrating its 50th anniversary in April 2008, and whereas over a 50-year history, the Lake Forest Swim Club athletes have won 65 Illinois champion titles, four USA Swimming Speedo championship titles, achieved national and world rankings, Illinois-US and American records, and represent US Swimming in every international event, whereas Lake Forest Swim Club received USA Swimming gold medals from 2000 to 2004, and a silver medal in 2004 and '08, and is the only Illinois club to ever achieve such recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, it's Sunday, April 27th, is hereby proclaimed as Lake Forest Swim Club Day, and that on behalf of the residents of the City of Lake Forest, the Lake Forest Swim Club has congratulated us on its 50th anniversary. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Michael Lawrence from the Swim Club will come up, and if you can give us just a few minutes on the club, I would appreciate it.
On behalf of all the members of the Swim Club, I want to thank the mayor of the city and the council for this honor. Over the past 50 years, we've tried to set a very high standard and achieve that standard within competitive swimming. Mike's mentioned a number of the achievements of the club, and we're very proud of all of those. We've had athletes represent the United States in international competition numerous times. Athletes from our team have represented the US on the Olympic team, Canadian Olympic team, Australian Olympic team. And on Sunday, in addition to celebrating our 50th anniversary, we will be recognizing and honoring two Lake Forest residents, Doug and Christina Lennox, who recently were named to the Puerto Rican Olympic team for the Games of the 29th Olympiad in Beijing. We've currently got about 200, just over 200 swimmers on our team, ranging from six years old to college age and above, and novices to truly elite-level competitors. In addition, we've got over 100 kids in swim school, and those young people may never be competitive swimmers, but they are learning a skill that could someday save their life, and that's a very important part of what we do also. So on behalf of 50 years of coaches, athletes, and swimmers, I want to thank you for this, and I hope in 50 years, there's, will be a different coach here, accepting a similar honor from a different council.
There certainly will be a different mayor. Maybe Mr. La Vert right here. Thank you, Michael. That ends my report.
Comments by the city manager.
Comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Acting Mayor La Vert, members of the city council. I have just a couple of quick items. Kathy, if you could put the first item up. As the council knows, we've been talking about economic development and the collection of data and information, and one of the things I would encourage all members of the community to do is visit the city's website and fill out this online survey. So if you could please make a note of that, we'll also include the information in your packet. But if you could go on and fill out this information, the council is going to be seeing coming back to you shortly. Actually, on your first meeting of June, you are going to be hearing a presentation on a consultant that we will be engaging to work with us on this economic development initiative. Also, you're going to be receiving some calendars to start looking at some dates for some special roundtable discussions similar to the, I think most of you participated in the roundtable discussion we had last November, December, and we'll be picking up where we left off on that and moving forward with some of the data. So if you could please encourage everyone to go onsite or online and fill out the survey, that would be greatly appreciated. A second item I'll mention is I had the pleasure and honor of participating in a panel discussion last Saturday down at the Chicago Architecture Foundation on teardown. And two things I wanted to mention to the council and the community that I found, or I felt pretty proud of and brought back. Number one is the, there is, through the AIA Illinois, they have a program called the 150 Great Places in Illinois, and you go on the website, illinoisgreatplaces.com, and Market Square is on that 100, is part of that 150 great places in the state of Illinois, so I think that's something certainly for us to be proud of. And the second thing is, it always amazes me when I go and I talk to these different groups about it, how much the outside of our community respects Lake Forest and what Lake Forest is doing. There was actually two architects from other communities that I won't name, that basically say, when things come up, we always ask first, what is Lake Forest doing in this area? And so I think that says an awful lot about the council, our boards and commissions, and the quality of staff that we have, and I thought I would just bring that back to you as well. The last thing is that I know with a lot of people coming back into town, everybody's asking, what's going on on Route 60? And so we wanted to give you just a quick status report. You do have, I think, in front of you a little information sheet, and this information comes out of the weekly meetings that are held onsite with IDOT, the Tollway Authority, city staff, and others. But the bad news, I guess if you want to call it that, is that they are approximately a month behind schedule. They were hoping to have the north ramp completed by mid-May. Because of weather and other problems, their schedule right now is that they're hoping to have the north half of the ramp done by June 18th, I believe is the date. Once the north half is done, then they will shift the traffic to the north half and start on the southern half. So weather-wise, they're about a month behind. I'd like to be able to say that they will catch up now that the weather is improving, but I'm not that confident, and I think we just have to prepare ourselves. But you have sort of an update there, and I think Karina has some pictures up on the screen, some of the progress that's being made, and hopefully with the weather improving here, we're going to start to see some real progress on that bridge project right now. I will say, and I know a couple of you attended the Amberly Open House that was held last Friday afternoon, and I know I was dreading driving out there at 5:00 on Friday, but quite frankly, I was shocked and surprised and pleased to see how traffic was moving on Route 60, and I think that goes to the access road that's at the Tollway Oasis. We are doing some traffic counts on it right now, and the numbers are somewhere between 1,200 and 1,500 cars a day are using that access point. And so that's really what's had such a positive impact on the east-west flows on Route 60 during this construction period. So if you have any questions, I know Ken Magnus is in the audience, any specific questions on the project, but as I said, they're approximately a month behind schedule, and I think now we're looking at about June, mid-June, before we see a shift of the traffic to the north side of the bridge.
Can you remind us again when this overall project is supposed to be done?
2010.
Right. I was thinking it was going to be when Mr. La Vert was mayor, so that's better.
Well, and I don't know, Ken, if they're still saying the end of 2008, likely the landscaping won't be done, but I think the pavement and the lane configurations will be established by the end of 2008. Is that what they're still shooting for?
Okay. So they think this is only going to be a one-year project?
That's what they're, for Route 60, yes, is a one-year project.
Okay, because Willow, it feels like, has taken...
It's still going on.
Still going, right?
Yeah.
Word about a year and a half on that one?
And I think it was because of Willow is where they tried to jump-start it, and actually start it last October, November, to see if they could try and push it and get it done before the end of this year. But again, if they're already a month behind schedule, who's to say what might happen? Ken, I don't know if you have a feeling that there's any other potential pitfalls down the road that might delay this even further at this point?
Offhand, I can't think of any pitfalls upcoming. What really delayed it, of course, is the weather and the utility relocates. So that was the bulk of the reasoning for the delay at this time.
I have a question concerning the utilities along there. The Commonwealth Edison has put up new poles along the south side, and I don't remember overhead lines before. Are those just there while they redo 60 for the rest of the length, and they'll go back down underground, or are those going to be permanent?
The ones actually opposite the high school property are permanent. I think those are the ones you were referring to?
Yeah, and along our park.
Yeah, those are permanent.
Those are all permanent.
Right.
But they, there weren't poles there before, or did I just...
There were some poles, but not as numerous.
Yeah, that's a lot bigger.
Not as big and tall.
No, it's pretty...
They were smaller.
Pretty big, yeah. I'm surprised to see that. It kind of ruins the view, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we agree. Unfortunately, they've had some power issues out there as well, and it's part of upgrading the Commonwealth Edison's response to improving the power, addressing the power outages that are up in that area.
Would have been nice underground, though.
Yeah.
Then they don't have things fall on them, or drive over the poles, or whatever, so...
Right.
Thank you, Ken.
And that completes my report this evening.
I just want to make one further comment about staff and board members, because it never ceases to amaze me how much our staff and how much our board and commission members do. This afternoon, there was a seminar at...
Tannet Garden.
...about ravine restoration and ravines, and it was attended by not only our staff, but our board and commission members, so they could all be up to date on the latest thing that's going on with ravine restoration and ravines. And actually, the thing that really warmed my heart was to hear that a number of landscapers were out there as well, learning about what the proper technique is to deal with ravines. So it just shows how much people want to give to the community by taking the time out to go to this afternoon event. So I thank staff for doing it, and boards and commission members who were there, I thank them for doing it as well. We're off to this.
Comments by council members.
Yes, Mr. Acting Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, if I may. Just a reminder to second ward residents that a special ward meeting is going to be held on Monday, April 28th, 7:00, at the Cherokee School Gymnasium. And at that time, we'll, I mean, we'll conduct it as a normal ward meeting, but some of the issues that will be addressed will be the Barre Campus redevelopment, the dreaded Old Elm Road closure for bridge repair, and other developments that are going on around town. So I encourage all the residents of the second ward to come out and tell us what you think.
I have one comment, and that is, I think all the homes in Lake Forest have received a Lake Forest handbook, and I would suggest that you take it and save it in a drawer, because it has tremendous information of things that are going on in town, from collection pickup to compost center to who to call for whatever, and it is just an invaluable resource for the homeowners, and it will save a lot of frustrating calls in trying to get information. It's all right there, and it's very neatly done and very easy to read. So watch for it. It has the Lake Forest seal on the front, and it's had kind of a green leaf design on the cover, but it's a very, very nice publication.
What is the start date for Alderman? Do we have a definite date? Sorry, Ken.
I'd like to start around.
Sure, sat closer. Projected start date for Alderman is June 1st, and it'll go through, it's about Thanksgiving of this year.
Ouch. So road closure, June 1. Okay.
We, one other comment. We have a open house of the Laurel and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee on May 1st, Thursday, May 1st. That will be at Gorton Center at 6:00 PM, and we would encourage any of the residents who are interested in that project to please come. Additionally, earlier in the afternoon, we are having a meeting with potential developers for that site. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of that. Thank you.
Council committee report.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just, I neglected to make a comment about someone who I thought had done a phenomenal job being on the council, and it was really a privilege and a pleasure, I know, for all of us to serve with Debbie Haddad. She brought a real, real sense of capability, professionalism, class, was a phenomenal member of this council, and we are all going to miss her insight and her knowledge and just her presence. She was, she's, she is a lovely person, and the City of Lake Forest is better because of Debbie's efforts.
I think we only wish that she had gone to a better law firm, though.
Maybe we can have a resolution for Debbie at a future meeting or something.
Oh, we will at the next meeting.
Yeah. So that would be great.
Council committee reports.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The Finance Committee this evening, we first, well, we had a discussion of a budget recap, summarizing our long budget meeting in the middle of March, and then going through the major changes from that. So our budget looks to be in good shape, and we will approve the final budget at the final fiscal year budget meeting next month. Additionally, we do have one resolution tonight, and that is resolution reallocating our 2008 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove. We discussed this at the Finance Committee meeting, but as a home rural community, we are allocated a volume cap for the issuance of tax-exempt private activity bonds. The city has not used any of the 2008 volume cap, and as such, this resolution is to allocate our cap, actually to Buffalo Grove, who is going to host the pool. So all the communities who haven't used their volume caps will give it to Buffalo Grove. We will set up a pool, and then that will be available for, as a clearinghouse for Lake County for the issuance of private activity bonds to finance industrial, manufacturing, and commercial projects. So this is something we do have done every year since we've been a home rural community when we haven't used the cap, and it's a good thing for Lake County. So if I can get a motion to grand final appro, sorry, a motion to approve the resolution reallocating the volume cap.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Swarthout.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Elliott.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Back to the acting mayor.
Opportunity for public to address the city council on non-agenda, agenda items.
Guess it's better than I do.
No comment.
Does anyone wish to address the council this evening? There are three items on the consent agenda. The first one is the approval of the April 7th, 2008 meeting minutes. Stop. Stop.
One, score one for the acting mayor. I have a motion.
You must stay on the consent agenda only, Mr. Mayor. Anybody additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
No, no.
Oh, this is all, I'm always...
You're going to go back with him then. Resolution supporting ITEP for the train station. Does everybody understand what we're doing with that, or any questions on the ITEP grant? And the third one is consideration of an ordinance amending the city code to add a new chapter 53 establishing the city administrative hearing system. This is for final approval. Questions on that? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Swarthout.
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Elliott.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Ordinances.
The first ordinance, the consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of the final approval of a plat of subdivision and approval of a special use permit in the form of a final development plan ordinance for Barrett Woods. The site proposed for development is the former Barre Campus located on Wesley and Sheridan Road. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This was before you, at your last meeting, it was a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission, which they forwarded to you after more than a year of study of the proposed Barre Woods project. At your last meeting, you did approve first reading of this ordinance. The ordinance approves both the final plat of subdivision and the special use permit. At your last meeting, you asked for clarification on several items. The ordinance has been amended in response to your request. In particular, language has been added to clarify that the city triangle parcel is intended to remain as open space in perpetuity, with the exception of a bicycle and pedestrian path. The recommendation is that the triangle parcel be transferred to the Barre Woods project, with the condition that the property remain as open space, that the developer bear the cost of installing the bicycle and pedestrian path, and that the homeowners association would in perpetuity be responsible for maintaining this triangle parcel in a manner consistent with that in which the front lawn is maintained and consistent with good forestry practices. The ordinance also addresses the timing issue, starting with commencement of demolition of the Tabor Wing within 30 days after your final action. The timeline, a detailed timeline, estimated timeline is included in your packet. The ordinance also was amended to speak to the timing of demolition, but I already mentioned that. I wanted to specifically address the letter that you received since the last meeting from Mr. Domke. He did raise some questions again about the density. We did forward that letter to the city attorney. The city attorney did respond to Mr. Domke. I believe you were copied on that response. The city attorney did review the Plan Commission's discussion and determined that the Plan Commission's recommendation on density, allowing a maximum of 120 units total on the property, allowing flexibility with respect to the exact number of units that will be located in Old Main, and of the 120 units, providing for a maximum of 80 of those units being constructed as new development. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the Plan Commission did very carefully consider density. Bottom line, they acknowledged that the density being granted to this parcel is being driven by Old Main, that the intent is to make it possible for a developer to preserve Old Main, and therefore, they believed that, given the Old Main footprint is what it is, they felt that it really wasn't of significance whether there were 32 units in Old Main or 47, that what really was important was to make sure the overall development was a high-quality plan and was consistent with, compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In front of you tonight is a suggestion from the city attorney to incorporate one additional whereas in the ordinance, which will specifically speak to the density issue and clarify any confusion with respect to whether the density is in fact consistent with the code. If you choose to do so tonight, it would be appropriate to grant final approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. I do know that the developer, Mr. Shaw, is also in the audience.
Kathy, there were a number of residents from nearby that also spoke about preserving the forested area just to the north, which is adjacent, between the development and the park. I didn't happen to see any new language in here, maybe I missed it, but...
That was my third issue that I missed. I believe at the last meeting, the mayor did make a point of noting that the 2.8 acre wooded parcel is incorporated in the master plan for South Park currently. To get that in the record, you did receive a copy of that master park plan as part of your packet. Since your last meeting, the Park and Rec Board has reviewed the issue, acknowledged that yes, in fact, the 2.8 acre wooded parcel is part of the park. They do not recommend placing a conservation easement on it, because it is part of the park, and we don't, the city hasn't placed conservation easements on other areas. That would also allow some flexibility as the park changes and develops. So it is formally part of the record that that parcel is not intended as a surplus piece of property, that it is currently considered to be part of South Park.
What does that mean in terms of what protection it gets, or what might happen to it during the course of this development?
During the course of this development, the property will be protected. There will be chain-link fence installed. There is a need to extend a water... There is a need to extend a water main through a portion of this property that has been known since the beginning. The majority of that water main will be augured. There will be care taken to preserve significant trees. So, the impact from construction of this property will be carefully monitored.
Kathy, I presume that means for, with respect to any future dispositions of that property, it's going to be treated just the same as the rest of that park and not segregated in any way or treated differently. It's presumably part and parcel of the entire park.
The master plan recognizes it as such and the Park and Recreation Board did confirm that.
Just another follow-up question. I haven't seen Vic's response to Mr. Domke. Vic, I presume you addressed the issue of process here, amending the code as we have.
I did.
I don't have an opinion on that.
And I apologize. I realize I only sent the response to the mayor, the manager and to Kathy. I didn't include all the council members and that's my oversight. Long and the short of that particular aspect of it, however, is that there was a suggestion that a different provision of the code might have been available and in fact, that provision of the code requires the density to be consistent with the underlying district. It was recognized at the outset that it was more reflective of the density of the adjoining district and that was the reason for the code amendment. The code amendment was done completely consistent with law. We had the public notice, the hearing, the city council ultimately considered it on the recommendation of the Plan Commission. So, there's nothing illegal in that respect.
No, no, I wasn't, I just, I just wanted to make sure we had addressed that.
The concern that was raised had to do with the incentive plan under the historic preservation regulations, but that's not something that can amend our code and I think that might have been a misimpression of Mr. Domke.
Great, thank you.
Kathy, relating to the triangle piece that's on the intersection of Sheridan and Wesley, that parcel will now be brought into the tax rolls, I'm assuming?
Yes, it will. It will be incorporated as part of Barrett Woods.
Okay.
As will the right of way for former Wesley roads still exists there as well that has never been vacated. So, we will bring the appropriate documentation back to the council to affect that and that entire property will become part of Barrett Woods.
Yeah, I assume there's utility easements underneath that road that would be maintained or, I'm not aware of any, but most roads had utilities running adjacent.
We will incorporate that triangle as part of the plat and assure that appropriate easements are there. As well as a public access easement for bicycles.
Any further questions? Can I have a motion?
Move that we grant final approval of the final development plan ordinance for Barrett Woods, incorporating the approval of the special use permit and approval of the final plat of subdivision.
Second?
Roll call.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a follow-up to this. It's a consideration of an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area for Barrett Woods development located at Wesley and Sheridan Road and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. Kathy, again.
Thank you. Again, you granted first reading of this ordinance at your last meeting. This is the ordinance that the council routinely approves for new developments to establish a special service area to benefit District 67. It's a negotiation that occurs between the developer and the school district and the city is just the mechanism for putting the SSA in place. If you choose to approve this this evening, we will proceed with proper notification and this will be back before you at your May 19th meeting for the public hearing.
Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
I just have one quick question. Kathy, do you know why it applies only to 67 and not 115? Did 115 just not take the initiative?
I think you ask that question every time we.
I do. I mean, it just, it baffles me.
115 is a consolidating school district.
Has nothing to do with it.
This occurred before there was the shared service agreement and I don't believe we were ever approached by 115 to establish this.
I don't think 115 has approached us even with the new school superintendent and board because I think it would be a situation they have to apply in both schools, both communities and I don't believe that Lake Bluff currently does this at their grade school level.
I don't like the answer any better than you do, Bob.
No, I'm just baffled.
I know we hear it every time, but it is, I don't like it.
Need a second?
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
New businesses.
First item is a discussion and consideration of the final budget issues relating to the new business, new municipal services building project. This is Mr. Nance, who is coming up for this one? Is there any rumor that your foot has got hurt in a scuffle with the contractor over this bidding?
Not yet.
Okay.
To be, maybe later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I heard it was assault delivery.
Members of the city council, earlier this month, members of the municipal services subcommittee, which is comprised of Alderman Swarthout and Alderman Grumhouse, former Alderman Jim Cowie and Bob Kiley, met with the MS design team to review the phase three bids and establish a recommended GMP for the new municipal services facility. For those who are unaware, the design team consists of Wright Architects, Riley Eltunian Builders, Williams Construction Company and city staff, which presented a project to the subcommittee that was within budget and the previously acknowledged budget and fulfilled the qualification of being lead certified in the silver category. In order to pursue additional scope that was bid in these projects, the committee reviewed all the alternatives for added value. Since the city was not receiving lead points for the permeable pavers, it was decided to remove this from the project and utilize the savings to offset building scope and keep the project on schedule. The decision to bid this project in three phases last year allowed the city to begin construction last fall in hopes to finish the construction drawings and bid out over the winter to capture lower prices. Unfortunately, the lower costs have not materialized due to a rise in the building commodities and this was evident in some of the bidding packages and that's why we've had to adjust some of our scopes. The design team and the subcommittee were very confident that the project could be brought in within budget and will meet the needs of the residents and employees for years to come. The remaining expenses that do exist for the project, aside from the bidding packages, includes the landscaping and owner's costs, which really includes installation of the fiber, furniture, communications. It also includes the architects and engineering fees mitigation from that standpoint. So, it covers all those items. It also carries a 5% contingency for unforeseen circumstance, construction contingency for unforeseen circumstances and field changes. It is recommended that, from the subcommittee, that the city council approve a GMP for the new MS facility at the Dalage property of $23,411,740. In addition, the finance chairman, public works chairman and city manager, as well as in bid package two, have the authority to approve expenditures up to that amount. Anything in excess of that amount must come back before council. I did send to you electronically and I have hard copies if you want, but I will. I should have passed these up before, sorry. But in your packet that you got electronically, but is the final GMP reconciliation that came up as a result of the design team and the subcommittee. As soon as you see the three bid packages that were built, which was supposed to be the grading, the landscaping, the long lead items such as concrete, mechanicals such as the waste list and steam and then the more important general trees and the actual construction itself. The total of that was $18,864.31. We still hope to continue to design the current construction contingency of 5%. Construction management fee, which is the Riley fee that we pay for the construction manager is 3%. Again, the original owner's cost, as I said before, included fiber, furniture, moving, architects' fees, owner's rep fees, mitigation for wetlands from SMC. And again, bringing the total to $23,411,740, which was under the tentatively approved budget of 24, 23,400,000 that we talked back at the budget back in March 11th. I do have. What you have before you here is really just, is just again, a summary of what was before you at the budget meeting and the meeting back in November that identified really, originally the council did approve $21.5 million on June 18th of 2007. That was based on conceptual drawings that was done by Steve Wright. At that time, the council authorized Wright to proceed to 30% finishing of the construction drawings, to go ahead and hire Williams Construction and to get a construction manager on board, value engineering the rest of the project to try and bring in the cost, the best cost possible. As a result of the 30% drawings and working with that team, they determined that the budget really needed to be 22,753. Through the value engineer, engineering, they were able to reduce it $533,000 and the project subtotal for the construction of the MS building to exclude lead items was $22.2 million. We also at that time identified lead options because the desire was to be certified. We identified over $2 million worth of potential lead items. We looked for direction from council because some of the items we needed answers on instantly. What if we're going to be lead certified? We needed to hire the consultant. We needed to do the enhanced commissioning. We also were in the process of trying to do grading out there last fall to save money. If we were going to do some of the concrete or concrete pavers, different grades had to exist and we could get value for using the same grade and cutting it once or filling it once. So, the items identified in yellow were items that were directed to staff to proceed with depending the price and the feasibility of it. Most of these items, again, were included into the lead certification. Again, we are silver. Probably in the middle range of silver and we've been told that you need to be within plus to three minus points due to the fact that you always don't get all the points that you request for the silver certification. There are additional items in there that we have identified through the value. In lieu of the concrete permeable pavers, we did add the skylights. We did add some exterior wrapping of duck work for air quality with exterior wrap versus interior. We also, pardon me, we again went with the skylights. So, we have included many of the items in there. We've incorporated back into basically the full amount that was going to be expended for the concrete pavers. About, I think, one-third of that money went back into lead items. The other third, two-thirds went into additional building scope items to include the salt storage capacity increase that the council talked about in February. That item was about $160,000 of the increase to the scope of the project. I don't know if there's questions. I do have here the architect, Steve Wright and Dave Riley and Todd Eltunian from Riley Eltunian Builders, if there's questions. But my recommendation is again, to establish the GMP at 23.344 million.
Tom, can I clarify one point and maybe Alderman Grumhouse or Swarthout can jump in? Is that I think really this evening, what we are locking in is the, what is the construction GMP because over the course of the next two to three months, the committee is going to continue to look at those costs that are set forth and the owner's cost, that roughly $3 million that's in there, to continue to work on those items and see where additional costs can be brought down. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Tom, by. Clarification that this project has been 100% bid by multiple subcontractors on every item and contracts have or are about to be awarded based on complete documents that the world has had an opportunity to bid and be selected. So, there are no more questions in terms of costs related to this project.
Correct. And many of the alternatives that were bid were reviewed by the subcommittee of each alternative that was bid for their review and input as well.
Tom, or Tom, by virtue of the reallocation of the money, of the money from the pavers into other lead items or non-lead items, has the lead tally changed from what it was when we had the pavers in there?
Actually, we were getting no lead points for the permeable pavers. So, these other items could potentially get us points, yes, but we still are solidly in the middle range of the silver category, which is what was our goal was. The three items that I, bear with me, were the skylights, exterior wrapped exposed duck work and sun shades on the existing side of the building that were put in for lead features in lieu of the concrete permeable pavers. Also, we were able to put in expanded salt, the alternative site lighting that go with the Lake Forest style lighting instead of the Conway style lighting, the larger IT storage area and additional precast planking over the plumbing and electrical storage would provide us extra storage in the facility.
We've really through these last three bid packages gone item by item and discussed each scope change of whether something was needed or not needed and, you know, as part of that also looked for areas where we could change the scope downward so as to save additional money or make things more efficient. So, you know, at least over the, I think through the whole project, but you know, especially as we've gone through these three bid packages over the last three months, there's been a significant amount of review by former Alderman Cowie and Alderman Swarthout and I is, you know, and I'm sure that staff and everyone working on the project had reviewed it three times the level that, you know, we've reviewed it in the meetings. So, you know, I think we've, speaking for Alderman Swarthout, feel very good about, you know, what's been going on in terms of, you know, bringing this thing under budget.
Yeah. We certainly got a sense, I think, from the entire council about the importance of the lead issue and we stayed to that commitment. There were choices that we made in, that we felt were appropriate based on the, you know, the level of pain that the taxpayer was still going to have. Issues like recycled water, we felt that that was probably not the best lead item to choose and yet the skylight issues seem to be, you know, those two issues as an example seem to be easy choices. So, it was a balancing act and then we, you know, I just want to minimize, but we have a quality building, not one that is silver plated, gold plated, but one that will be functional over the next 100 years, I think, for this community and yet one that doesn't, isn't something that we'd be ashamed of and will stand the test of time and is appropriate within that business park. So, we're very, I think, pleased with the results of not only the architects' design, but the hard work of the general contractors in trying to bring this thing down to a manageable budget.
This is clearly an expensive project and it's a big undertaking, but I think it is something the city desperately needs. And we've been trying to get this off the ground for about 15 years. We need to move forward with this. And I think, you know, everyone has to keep reminding themselves that, you know, we are getting this project done in just an unprecedented commodities environment. I mean, when you look at the input cost for what is going in here, if you look at the price of steel, if you look at the price of copper, you look at the price of oil, you know, that's the one that's probably most tangible to people out there. You know, they have just been going up at a sky high rate since we started this project. You know, there was some bad luck involved in that, but I think it's difficult for anyone to know. for anyone to know. You know, you may take the attitude, well, why don't you wait two years? Well, it's really hard to wait two years because we really need the facility, but, you know, there's no guarantee what the price of oil is going to be. And I don't think there are many of us that would have said, you know, the price of oil, when it started the year at eighty-three dollars and we were going into recession, would be at, you know, one fifteen, where it is today, and steel's gone up even faster. So, you know, there really is an insatiable demand for these commodities out there, and, you know, they could just keep going up, so we just sort of got to, you know, take what's out there and go with it. You know, I think this is a good, you know, chart to show you diesel fuel and what's happened with it, and, you know, especially what's happened with it this year.
I want to dovetail enough of those comments. We locked in for both precast concrete and steel. We purchased some steel, and there's a lot of steel in the building, even though it may not appear that way, but there is a lot of steel in that, and those prices have spiked since we locked in those numbers some four or five months ago. Jim Cowie, who's in the, in the big warehouse building business, related a story just last Friday that the identical building that he completed one year ago is now twenty-five percent higher today, and he just priced that building out, and he's building right next to the existing building that he built. So it, construction prices, though the world may think that, you know, it's flat, the commodity prices have pushed, pushed the materials up.
Correct. And the last two slides I put up was furnished to me from, from Riley, is their experience over the last four or five years with construction prices. You saw the, the diesel fuel, which does affect everything in terms of the product as well as the transportation to get product to you. And here's another example of, of other prices, steel prices, that, again, over the five-year trend, that it's just, it's going up, and the savings that we were hoping to realize in the economy just did not happen.
David, do you have any, I'm sorry, Tom?
Yeah, we may be far better off than we got it done because they're still going up. And I feel very, very confident that this is probably one of the best reviewed projects we've ever had in Lake Forest, and probably one of the best teams of taxpayers overlooking it. So thank you to the group, and I'm very pleased to see where we're going.
I mean, you know, I can promise you, if we rebid bid package two today, you know, the price would be ten percent higher. It's just what steel and, and concrete have done in the last, you know, month and a half. So, you know, it is what it is.
That was going to be, going to be my question. How much of an increase in the cost of the project would you estimate is, is due to the rise in steel, copper, and, and oil?
I don't have a firm estimate on that, but, you know, I think that...
An order of magnitude is...
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Probably not a bad number to think about. It might even be higher.
I think based on Alderman Cowie's experience, no question about it. You know, can I just pick up on Alderman Luby's point? Because I have to say, what was it, two or three years ago, when I think then Alderman Reynolds and Alderman Morse and Alderman Swarthout first said, let's go through this process? I wasn't necessarily sold on it. But having now participated in it, and I think seeing the team that the council put together with Alderman Grumhouse and Swarthout and former Alderman Cowie, you have gotten the best value out of this thing. You certainly have someone who watches the purse strings very tight, and you have two other people who are in this business and can challenge the, both the architect and the owner's rep and the builder. And believe me, they have done that, and I think the three of them are in the audience, and they will show you the scars from the meetings where they got beat up. So I, I just want the council and the community to know that you had very, three very good representatives there, making sure that you got the highest quality building at the best price.
Well, I'd like to say the committee did a great job as well. I think, once I left, you guys made a lot of progress.
That was instructive.
But I'm, I'm delighted to see that you've been able to maintain the budget. I, I still have a number of questions, but I think that you've come a long way in this environment, and especially to have accomplished the lead items that we were, at least a majority of us, I think, were very strongly supportive of. I have one question about contingency. I heard repeatedly questions about, we've got everything a hundred percent bid. What are we carrying a contingency of a million bucks for?
We're still unforeseen for weather. Obviously, we're going, we're experiencing that right now. We hope to, been underway a month ago out there, so there is some delay from that standpoint. There could be still some bad soils that are found, some, from that standpoint, so those are the issues, and those will be turned back basically to the project to do things, enhancements as we see fit or approved upon as we get further down in the, in the project.
Or, or return to the taxpayer, Tom. That was a great question.
That's my point.
It's a great, it was a great question. It's, it's a question we threw out there, too, and we also instructed the, the contractor and the owner's rep that there is no urgency. If we want to take a one-month shut down the project, we can with the MS situation as it is currently. You know, there's no reason we have to vacate one month sooner or one month later. It's, it, there is certainly items that need to be installed. Precast is coming, steel is coming, so we need to stay ahead of some of those items. But, you know, unforeseen weather conditions, you know, maybe we can...
Weather is weather. I just don't know where the, how the contract is structured and where the risk is being borne for any of these items. I understand underground is pretty traditional. Weather is typically not. I'm just wondering where the risk is borne for these. It sounds like the city's taking risk on these items?
Depends on the item.
Yeah. Okay. The other thing that I heard in the presentation that I, I would like, it said something at the end of, tail end about your approval or Bob's approval. If we're going to be spending even into the contingency money, I'd like to make sure that the finance chairman or whoever the mayor designates is the approver, someone at the council level.
And that is the chairman?
Okay. Great.
Any other questions? And I have a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second?
Um, I didn't see a, we don't have a motion, do we? It's just a discussion.
No, you need to approve.
You have your second?
We're approving it.
Discussion and consideration of final budgets.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Well, we can approve it anyway.
I mean, on all the other items, we've had this issue a couple of times before, which is, we're either having a discussion or an approval. If it's an approval, then it needs to be presented as an approval.
Well, that's why we put the, the second term consideration of the budget, because you just need to approve the budget, and then the, part of the motion was a continuation like you did for phase one and two, is that Alderman Grumhouse, Alderman Swarthout and/or his replacement as chairman of the Public Works Committee will then make sure that once that budget is set and the, each component has been bid out, and each one will be approved by the committee as we go forward. That's what we did with phase one and two. So this is just the third phase now.
I know, and I raised it at phase one, phase two, which is, if we're going to be presented with an item for a vote, then it needs to be presented as a vote. And I, a number of council members raised it at the, at the point in time, and Vic, if you want to address this, you can, but...
I, I'm not quite sure I'm following your concern. It does specifically state in the agenda that it is for consideration. Consideration would be a matter of voting. If you're looking for something, I, I know that the convention in many of our agenda items is to have a specific recommendation...
Is a recommendation with specific language relative to the...
Right. And in this, in this particular one, the, the packet was something to be coming under separate cover. And I think that if you look at the, if you look at the second, sorry, third sentence in the penultimate paragraph, it says, it is the recommendation to establish the GMP in the amount of twenty-three, four, eleven, seven, forty.
Right. I saw that.
So it's, it's on the agenda appropriately for a vote. The convention of having the recommended action is, is actually in the separate cover material rather than in the agenda packet.
Okay. I, I understand. I just, we raised this the last time it came up, and it would be helpful for me that these items are presented, if there's going to be a vote at council, that they're presented in such an manner. And I don't know what the other council members feel, but it's helpful for me to, to, to know that we're being asked to vote on something.
Yeah, and, and Alderman Morse, you're absolutely correct, and, and we put it this way purposely because the packet went out Thursday morning, and the committee was meeting on Friday afternoon. And we knew that something was going to be coming out later, but we didn't want to be presumptuous in terms of after the, until the committee had met. So that's why maybe there's a little more wiggle room than we normally do, but quite frankly, it was the whole timing of when the, the review committee was meeting.
I understand. I'm just trying to make a point.
I think it's a good point. No, but I seconded it.
No, I understand. Anybody can make a motion they want at any point in time. There's not an issue with that.
I know that.
It's just helpful if we're being asked to vote on something that we...
We had a motion, we had a second.
Moved and seconded and...
Can you roll call?
Roll call, vote.
There you go.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Hanahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Pardon?
I think we can keep going, but hold on just a second. I do have a comment about all this, because I do wish to thank former Alderman Cowie and our team. I know they've worked very hard on this. And more importantly, the other person I'd like to thank is the council themselves, because many other public bodies, including Lake County Forest Reserve, chose not to take the route we've taken. They've chosen to build a building that was not certified. They've chosen to build a building that was not green. We could have taken the easy way out, but we didn't, and I appreciate that. I know that it causes some pain in some members of the council to spend this, but I think it was the right thing to do for our community. I think it's the right thing to do for our environment, and I applaud each and every one of you for sticking to the guns and getting this through. So thank you. With that note, are we, I think our current sitting mayor is going to be leaving us.
Homework?
Homework doesn't seem to want to.
Homework needs to be done, and bedtime needs to be hit, and if he sticks around for the next part of this, believe me, his bedtime will be way past supposed to be. But I do want to make one comment, in case your parents ever let you forget, and I don't want them to let you forget this. You have presided over a meeting that probably two of the most important items to this city have been passed. Number one is the redevelopment of twenty-three acres of, of City of Lake Forest, which is the largest redevelopment of any one parcel that we will have in our community. And second, you've just gotten through the approval of the largest public works project this community will ever have done. Twenty-one million was our water plant, but you have approved a twenty-three million-dollar rebuilding of the MS, and it's all done under your name. Congratulations. Yeah, boy.
I, I think you should be able to con an ice cream cone out of sweets out of that on your way home.
That's how...
For that kind of work, jeez, that's all he gets is an ice cream cone?
That's how a mayor deflects responsibility.
Claiming the kid.
The next item on the agenda is the Public Works Committee report. Alderman Swarthout?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talked about all these items just previously in the Finance Committee meeting, but I would ask Michael Thomas, if he's still in the room, Michael Thomas of University of Kansas, to come up.
I was amazed I wasn't in the minutes. I was going to point that out.
Astounded. I hope that city manager Kylie got his ten dollars.
I did, and there, very much thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We can bet any year.
We'll see you next year.
I heard he brought it to the Masters.
Yeah. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. This evening, staff is requesting city council approval for a number of items. To begin with, on your council agenda, is the processing agreement for the recyclables. We have spoken about this over the past year to expand the city's recycling program. We need another piece of infrastructure, and that will be your next item to construct this ramp. But this is the agreement to sign up with Resource Management. They will deliver the, the recyclables to their facility, process them, and the agreement has been reviewed both by our city attorneys as well as their legal department. It's attached for your review and approval. One modification on the recommended action, after your discussion at the Finance Committee meeting, the second sentence may be changed or may not, up to your decision.
I would, I would ask you just to comment on, we talked a little about commodity prices. Could you just comment some good news on commodity prices and why this is such a timely thing for the city to act on?
Sure. The recyclables, when, when we discussed this idea of expanding the program last June, Resource Management, their price of recyclables at that point was thirty-eight dollars a ton. It has increased today to fifty-six dollars a ton. As a result, the, the payback time period for this ramp has decreased by approximately a year and a half to two years. So if we are lucky and receive the grant, it will be just under two years of payback. If we do not receive the grant, it will be a little over two years for the payback. But the recyclables, their values have, have gone up significantly.
Even more importantly, I think, consistent with the city survey, the residents were asking for expanded recycling, and what we're going to be doing here is, is making sure that we deliver on that. So I think that's a great, a great step forward, just like we've done with our building and stressing the importance of conservation in the environment. We're doing that here as well, so.
Correct. Once, once we have the, once we have the ramp constructed and we're able to, to transfer the material, we will begin to pick up cardboard, chipboard, phone books, junk mail, magazines, office paper, paperback books, those types of things, all at the curb, which we now take on the weekends at the Capitol Center, but we will hopefully by August start picking those materials up at the curb, so.
So the commodity price differential is for the bundled, to be collected types of recyclables?
Single stream, where everything, everything is mixed. Correct. Yes.
I would ask for a recommendation for approval on this.
The one question I have on this recommended action is, it says it's contingent on the grant, and as we talked about earlier tonight, I don't think we are going to make it contingent on the grant. I don't know if we want to talk about, I know we talked about the grant earlier, but I think based on discussions of the Finance Committee meeting, it was everyone's, it was the council's view that, you know, we should go ahead and move forward on this without the grant, even if we can't get the grant, although it's certainly our hope and our expectation that we're still going to get it.
I think it was that we were going to approve the contract with a May one, or a minimum May one date. If we get back to you, we will probably just confirm the go, but yes, we're moving forward without it because there is no clear indication that we are going to have the grant funding.
Okay. Had a motion?
Well, I think that's for item A first.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll second it.
We have a...
I made a motion.
I don't think we have a...
I made a motion.
You did, I'll have a second. I'll have a second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Hanahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Terrific. Item B is the award of the recycling transfer ramp that Michael just spoke about. This is a potential sixty thousand dollar grant that's being hung up in Springfield. We talked about that at the Finance Committee meeting. Michael, do you have anything more to add to that?
The, the only, the only note is that as long as our contract is dated May first, if in fact we are to receive the grant, then we are A-OK. It will be looked upon as a current project, and with the, with the, the contract dated May first or thereafter, we'll be fine, and we can receive the grant.
Any questions on this?
Obviously, a great bid versus where the other seven came out.
Yep. Yep, we don't want to lose this contract.
Yep.
Motion for acceptance.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye. So this is again with, without the contingency, correct?
That's correct.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Hanahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott, aye.
Oh, okay. I did hear you. Seven yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
For simplicity's sake, Tom, can we take all of the capital equipment programs and put them into one vote for all of the units?
I, I would hope so. At, at the Finance Committee meeting, we talked about all the items that follow on the equipment. Had a, a healthy discussion, but we concluded that the staff did a nice job bidding all these pieces of equipment out, and received some excellent bids.
Tom, just a change on page nine with the 202 unit?
Yes. There was a discrepancy on 202.
That, that unit 202 only will be transferred to engineering. The, the other unit will be traded in. Correct.[1777.63] Correct.
I'd make a motion to accept all the recommended actions on the capital expenditures. If we can do that.
Second.
If I might suggest that the motion be to accept the purchases, the sales we should do by a separate action.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to waive first reading for that.
Make a motion to accept the purchases.
Second.
Detailed the recommended auctions, actions.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries.
Motion to waive first reading on the purchases?
On the sales.
On the sales, sorry.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the sales.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries.
So Mike, what's the tally of the check that we just gave you?
I haven't added that up yet. Me doing the next half hour when I get back.
No more than the fuel across the drive here, probably.
Now, we also talked about it at the Finance Committee, that, that all these vehicles, when available, will have flex fuel ability. So again, to Alderman Morse's point, we're trying to be flexible and responsive to, to the environment. Next item is a ward of a bid for the purchase and installation of a new HVAC system for the recreation center, gymnasium. Michael, do you have any thing that you'd like to add about this?
We, we placed bids out. The item here is actually a current FY 2008 item that's listed in our capital improvement plan. We went out to bid, received three bids. The low bid did not have electrical nor the roofing work included in the bid, so we had to reject the, reject that bid as not meeting our specifications, our requirements. So the second lowest bid is Amber Mechanical, and the overage will be covered in some of the savings in our operating capital budget.
Just out of curiosity, Mike, on this one, why were we so far off the estimate? It just, it usually we're right there, and, I mean, this is more than 10%.
Correct.
It's almost 20%.
This one, this one and the second one, the next item, we were off on both of them. Number one, we received the estimates for this work probably about 13 months ago when we were putting together the FY 08 capital improvement plan. Number two, in that time period, we have updated all of our purchasing policies, and one of the things that we discovered with the purchasing policies, that this type of work is now considered part of public works and therefore prevailing wage is required. The numbers, the budget estimates that we've had in the past for this type of work have not necessarily included prevailing wage. Well, now it's required. So these numbers reflect prevailing wage payments and obviously all of our insurance requirements, bid bonds, those types of things that are typically in our contracts. But that is, that is the, the answer why.
So does that mean we can't expect larger budget figures from you in the future because that's going to be the name, the rule of the game?
Yes. That's, that's it. That's it.
This was the city's attorney's recommendation on these changes?
Yes.
Any other questions on this item?
Oh, he's going to respond.
Thank you only to the general assembly. And I think it would be much cheaper to pay these than to have to pay the penalties if we are not complying with the law.
I'm sure that is the case.
So true. Motion to award the bid to Amber Mechanical.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries.
Next item is the award of the bid for the exterior paint removal and new paint on the city hall.
This item again is listed in our current fiscal year capital improvement budget. The painting includes and restoration of the south elevation dormer, the north elevation windows, the north elevation dormer, and the, the north elevation soffit and fascia. So this work will, we'd like to begin this work as soon as possible so we can get things buttoned up for Lake Forest Day. But this is bringing the wood all the way down to bare wood and starting fresh.
How long ago did we renovate city hall?
10 years.
1997.
1997.
So this paint job lasted 10 years.
Better than a road, in some cases.
In the roads, yeah. Rough winter.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Award the bid to DaVinci Painters.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next item, boy, hardest working committee in, in the city councils, Public Works, huh? Award of contract for 2008 annual street resurfacing program. I just have to say personally, I am really thrilled with the, the pricing that we received, even though the, the price of oil has obviously skyrocketed. We think that work is way down for road, road resurfacing, with the exception of the Tri-State, but where there's a lot of concrete. But I'm very, very happy with the, the bidding that we received. Anybody going to take this? If there are any other questions?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to award.
Ken's going to get up, but I don't think you need a comment from Ken. Go ahead. Alderman Morse.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for the contract to allow the street repaving, resurfacing program. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Elliott?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion carries.
Next item, award for a contract designed for engineering services only on Owani Road water main replacement project. Did we miss something?
Yeah, didn't we have to do the additional?
That's coming up. This is a water main replacement project on Owani.
I think we missed the top of 16.
Oh, you did.
Okay. The smarter first word Alderman caught us. I don't see it.
Does it add to the above contract?
Oh, okay.
Add to the above contract.
Additional contract work for resurfacing in the amount of $398,000 to include authorization to expend if necessary, an additional amount, not to exceed 5%. This is for additional roads to resurfacing.
This, this is the eight street resurfacings that we were going to do as a result of the winter on the really deteriorating roads.
Right.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Swarthout?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.[1527.97]